Okay, and the door does not need to be closed, especially because I know we're expecting two more planning commission people. Okay, but let's go ahead and get this business underway. First of all, I would, I'm Mary Hansen, I'm Planning Commission Chairperson, and I welcome you this evening to two special hearings, and it were public hearings for special use permits. And the first thing I'd like to do is to introduce Urbana's new town administrator and zoning administrator, Ted Costin, so we can welcome Ted. And boy, are we thrilled to have Ted with us. So, so anyway, this is a public hearing to consider special use permit application 2023 SUPA-04, and I am hereby opening this public hearing. Okay? So here it is. We are here to consider special use permit application of Marnie Hart, who wishes a permit to keep a pony at her residence at 301 Kent Street. The property where the pony would be kept is located in a residential district. We will first hear from staff about the application and relevant provision of the zoning ordinance. So Roy Keim is going to, I think, begin that. And Roy is our soon-to-be outgoing zoning administrator. So, thank you, Roy.
Okay. You all have been given a memorandum on this special use permit application. It's for, as Mary said, a request to keep a pony at 301 Kent Street in Urbana. The property consists of 1.26 acres. The entire property, except the garage, is enclosed with a wooden fence, and the dwelling is connected with town water and sewer. And the application and other details are attached to the material that you are provided. We notified four adjacent property owners on December 1st. Received one reply and no request for the applications, other than that, one letter back. And I'm going to go into that letter in a while, just to discuss it. The hearing was advertised as required November 30th, December 7th. And what we are doing is we are looking to see if a permit, special permit, special use permit should be granted. Section 1742.317 allows for a private stable for keeping of horses, ponies, or livestock for personal enjoyment and not for a business, provided that any building keeping the animals should be located at least 100 feet from any side or rear wall, and only one animal per acre can be, one animal per acre can be kept. We can look at the letter that came in, and we should discuss it. I'm going to read it because we were asked to read it, and it's as if the person were here making the comments. After I give my summation, Marnie's going to talk a little bit, and then there'll be questions and answers. But if the commission wishes to, you can add additional restrictions to the permit. Like, on a daily basis, the pony droppings could be picked up, and the fence has to be maintained around the property, provide shelter and well-being for the pony during inclement weather, provide the pony from causing distractions to other neighbors and their pets, and to comply with all state, federal regulations and laws. I think we would put those in on a special use permit, and then anything else that you think is appropriate. Now, the letter I referred to, I got, came from their next-door neighbor immediately to the west, Elizabeth Pritchard, and I'm going to read it because she asked me to, and we can do that in lieu of public comment. "I received your letter regarding the application for a special use permit at 301 Kent Street in the town of Urbana. I am unable to attend the Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, the 12th, and would like for this letter to be read in the meeting in my absence. I'll preface my thoughts by saying that the main concern is around the health and safety of Teddy, who we have found over the past year and a half, who we have grown fond over the past few years. I grew up owning horses and have had a passion for them my whole life." This is kind of an unusual letter, because the health of the animal really isn't a zoning matter, but in deference to the resident, we'll proceed with this. As a group, the, when you consider the special use permit here, some items be considered. Teddy's paddock area should be kept dry and adequately drained for runoff, and also preservation of his health. I would advise the Planning Commission to have an independent expert assess Teddy's condition, the condition of his stable and his paddock. Does Teddy have a veterinarian farrier that sees his vaccinations, worming, and conditions on the feet are done on an annual basis? I question whether there is sufficient area for Teddy to graze. The average horse requires at least two acres of pasture. Understanding that Teddy is on a small site, however, less area may be required from him. But the property still seems too small, approximately 1.2 acres. And as I said when I started off, one acre is all that's required by the ordinance, especially given the building and other grounds on the property. All in all, I would estimate Teddy has less than 0.8 acres to roam and none of its pastures. Teddy should not be eating grass. If he does, he can develop colic, gastronomical conditions, and those are painful and dangerous. As long as Teddy is on the property, a supervising adult should share, address any emergencies. It is not appropriate to leave Teddy alone on the property for any length of time. Most experts recommend not more than 10 hours. Mental health is also important to us, even Teddy. He spends the majority of his time alone without company of other equine friends. I hope he is doing well mentally, I hope he is too. We have had trespassers on our property over the past year, people wanting to look closely at Teddy. Recently, I saw, was driving my driveway that borders the paddock, and had to slam on the brakes when the father had his golf cart out on our property to let his children look at Teddy. Even the people that walk all the way up our driveway into our yard look at him. I recently put up a no trespassing sign to see if that solves the issue, but it's something we should not have to deal with. I would also note the process of determining the special unit, special permit has been in reverse order. I would have appreciated a formal review before Teddy was brought onto the property. My daughter, who visits me in Urbana on occasion, is allergic to horses. Even the smell of them makes her breathing problems, and she breaks out in hives. When living, when she is visiting us, she is careful to avoid the part of the yard where Teddy is close. If a special use permit is approved, then does that allow anyone else on the property, does anyone else in town get to use a horse, pigs, goats, donkeys, llamas? Where do you draw the line? Remember, we are a residential community, not a farm. To that point, this special use permit would only apply to this particular property. Anybody else who wants to put a horse has to do the same thing that we're doing now. We're not changing the zoning laws. The letter continues, "We want to be good neighbors and not try to throw up any roadblocks, but we do hope the Planning Commission takes these points into consideration during their review process. If the commission decides in favor of the special permit, we would prefer that it reevaluate on a routine basis." I am not in favor of special permit that would be granted on a permitted basis. So that's what the letter says. I read it kind of out of order, because I think that Marnie will address some of those issues. She was given a copy of this letter. It's all you were, and it's in the material back there. And then I think there are other people who are going to comment on issues that were in this letter. And I have talked to our resident veterinarian about this, and he was, he was not concerned by these issues. He said they can all be taken care of, and probably already have been by Marnie. So, Marnie, it's your show.
Thank you, sir. All right, folks, we've got some materials. Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like a copy? Thank you, Roy, for that, I really appreciate it. As Roy mentioned, the town code allows homeowners in special circumstances to have a pony, a horse, or other animals. In this case, we do have a miniature pony, Teddy. And I am seeking a perpetual special use permit contingent on us adhering to any restrictions that you all deem appropriate. Roy named off a few that could be reasonably considered. And the reason for that is Teddy's security. He is a, and I may get a little emotional. Animals and pets are, I can't believe I'm doing this. I told myself I wouldn't do this. They're a very important part of my life. They're part of my family, and I don't want anything to affect us potentially losing him or affecting his security. It's of a place where if this use permit doesn't go our way, I will look at selling our property and leaving it down. That's how much it means to me. And I feel if there isn't a perpetual use permit in place, then every year, we're going to have to be sort of beholden to changing attitudes or people's opinion or mean-spiritedness or whatever. Whereas a perpetual permit would allow me to abide by and control adhering to restrictions or rules and requirements. Betty's letter is true. I own the fact that I got the pony before seeking the permit, it was during COVID, and I apologize for that, and I will take responsibility for that. We have maintained our property with the highest level of care. I love this town, and I'm very proud of our home, and making sure that we maintain it with, you know, the horse poo and all that is very important to us as well. So within the materials, I'm not going to read through everything. I have included some specific answers to Betty's concern. I have some pictures I've included on page two. Teddy is not a depressed horse, he's not lonely. If you Google "what does loneliness or depression look like in a horse", you can see, see what those are, and I've sort of included them in the materials as well. I think he thinks he's a dog, frankly. He tries to come in our home, and he's, he's just generally a great boy. So the third page, lion miniature horse, I know I'm a little kooky, I totally get it. But number one, he brings joy. He brings joy to me. He brings joy to lots and lots of people in this town, old and young. I have to tell you, like, the kids love the pony, but there are so many widowers, men, that come up to him and feed him on a daily basis. Like, it's truly a heartwarming, warming thing. The intent is to use him to do some therapy work. It's just with the kids and work and all that, we haven't been able, able to get to that. Two is we have adequate space. Our property is 1.2 acres, as Roy mentioned. However, there is a second parcel that's actually attached to it, so it's actually better. It was because a long time ago, Betty needed access to her driveway, and so there were some weirdo things that happened with the property line. So it's actually bigger than the 1.2 acres. She also mentioned that horses require two to four acres. While that's very true for the, for a regular-sized horse, it's commonly known that miniatures require about 0.2 acre, 2.5 acres apiece. And so that, that fact that she referenced is actually incorrect. And then third, the third reason that I, you know, why a miniature horse is, people don't realize what happens to a lot of the horses in this country that nobody wants anymore. Hundreds of thousands of horses are taken to killlots and slaughtered each year for meat. These lots are awful, and I'm going to not go into the details because I will start crying again. Miniatures are particularly in bad situations when they find themselves in these spots. They're small, they get abused, they get knocked around, and it's just a really awful scenario. So for me, it was like, if I have the means and the facilities to take care of one, why not? So that's a little bit of insight into crazy Marnie's head. Where does Teddy live? The pony is free-range. He has a paddock in our yard. It is on a hill, and it's sand, so it is well-drained. There's no drainage issues or anything like that. If it rains, of course, you know, you're going to have a little bit of mud, but that dries out very quickly. But he will not stay in there. He has no interest in being locked up. He sleeps under a magnolia tree, and frankly, he's, most of the time, he stands next to our house at night. That's kind of his place. In inclement weather, though, he does have the paddock where he can go. We also have a relationship with a farm up the street, Little Wonders Horse Farm, where Teddy spent last winter, because I wasn't able to be here as much because of work and traveling. I didn't, I didn't want his, you know, health or his safety to be, be at risk. This year, my in-laws are actually moving here, and so we're trying to figure out how often they'll be here, whether we take him to the farm or not. Teddy is an automatic feeder, he's a little pig. If you see him, there's no issues with his feed. He's probably borderline needs to go on a diet. But he gets a ration of his pellets every day. He also has more than enough hay in there to eat. He never eats the hay, he loves the pellets and the grass. He has access to water in the winter. It has a heater that is included, and then scratching posts and salt lick in there as well. I also am always watching, both for like my home security, but also for Teddy's safety and then the safety of other people's. We have three cameras. I'm not going to disclose the location of those for security reasons, but I know what's going on at all time on my property. And like I said, in winter, last year, we sent him away to a farm up the road, and we are, we will evaluate that on an ongoing basis, the appropriateness of that. What does Teddy eat? Betty mentioned that he should not eat hay. That is an inaccurate statement to make. You have to watch out for colic in ponies. When you take, when the farm, for instance, he was on a drylot in a pen by himself, and so we had to, we literally let him out for 15 minutes a day until we felt comfortable that he wouldn't have any problems going back on grass. And we've never given him cut grass. This is not my first rodeo with owning horses or any other animals, and I would, I would never do that. How do we handle medical care? He has a veterinarian. I also do things like deworming. He has flea medicine that he takes on a regular basis. And we have a farrier that comes every two to three months, depending on scheduling. He's actually, Skip is actually coming next week to trim his toenails. Is he lonely with a companion horse? I wish I could have more, I can't. And he is not, though, exhibited in any of the signs of loneliness, like I mentioned, pasting, restlessness, loss of appetite, weight, cribbing, excessive kicking, calling, or excessive winning. None of those apply to Teddy. He has four dogs as companions. My schedule varies depending on work, but I'm usually here. I leave Tuesday morning and either go to Washington DC or Richmond, and I'm back here Thursday night or Friday morning. So I'm in town the majority of time, it just depends, depends on my schedule. Do we leave the property? Of course, like I said. Like, I have, I have to, I have to work. I have to pay for, pay for my life and for Teddy, and so that, yes. There is times when Teddy is alone for more than 10 hours, but I would, I would wager to bet a lot of horses in Middlesex County find themselves in that situation as well. On the last page, the last question that she raised is, does Teddy bother our neighbors? Betty's concern about the trespassing is valid. If this had been raised before yesterday, I absolutely would have addressed it. People love to come and see him. And so I would propose that we will build a six-foot privacy fence on that line of the property line so that folks can't see in the backyard, and that should fully remove the nuisance from her and the issue that she raised. It's going to take me a minute to do it, but we will do that as expeditiously as possible. No one else has ever said anything to me about Teddy. In fact, a lot of our neighbors feed him on an ongoing basis, including Mr. Buxton. And, and like I said, if there were ever any concerns raised, I would make sure to absolutely address him. So those are the materials that, that I prepared today. I tried to address all of Betty's concerns, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that y'all have. And again, I apologize for, for getting emotional.
Okay. So are there any questions by Planning Commission members? And I do want to, didn't take roll call and should have. So, so Katie Wilson, here. Marnie? Or Marnie, Gary?
Here.
Okay, Dawn?
Here.
Okay. And Carol?
Here.
Okay. And Louis?
Here.
Okay. And if the record could please note that Gary arrived at, at 5:10 and that Carol arrived at 5:03, just for the record, in case there's any question about what anybody heard and knew before any, any kind of recommendations are made. Okay, thank you. So does anyone on the Planning Commission have any questions?
I do not. I live across the street. It's a great pet to have close by. It's the quietest pet. Considering that we have numerous dogs that just go, go, go all the time. So I have, I have no problems.
Okay.
My kids love them. They always look for them, and my dog is scared of them, but it's okay.
That's interesting.
My kids love them. I mean, when I said what I was doing, I was told, "We're Team Teddy." But I also would like to, I read the letter, so even though I missed part of Roy's reading it out loud, I did read it today. And the one thing that I would highlight is, I'm not sure the health concerns, many of which Marnie addressed, I'm not sure those are appropriately in our purview. And to the extent that someone has concerns about how he's cared for, I would assume the appropriate thing is to call the sheriff and the animal control issue.
Right. And that was something that Ted Costin clarified, and I think Roy also clarified before we actually started, that it doesn't really apply to zoning. Yeah, okay.
Teddy, Teddy gets carrots out of my garden from time to time, and my grandkids love him. And I think he's an asset to the community.
Okay. And I think Carol has already commented. Louis, do you have anything you wish to ask or say?
I don't really have anything much to add. Not your first rodeo seems accurate. You seem to have put it together pretty well. Does seem to be part of the family. I did question about the permit being in reverse order, so I appreciate you addressing that. Other than that, I don't really have anything else to add.
I do have one technical question, and it has to do, Roy's going, "Oh, no." Can't let you go that easy, Roy. Okay. And it has to do with, are we, are we making a recommendation to council on a permit for Teddy special use or for the property to have a special use permit? And if so, if it's the property, does that convey if it's sold?
It is for the property, and it depends on how you write it. You could say that it is just in effect as long as the current owners own the property, or you could say it's in perpetuity. I don't know that I would do it in perpetuity. And you are making, as you say, a recommendation to the council, which they can adopt or not adopt. It's, there'll be another public hearing, unfortunately, and we'll go through Paulus again. But that's what it is. You're not doing it just for Teddy. If Teddy were to vanish and the permit was in existence, another miniature pony could be brought on the property.
Okay. All right.
Miniature pony. So that would be key, I guess.
It could be a horse.
It could be a full-grown.
According, according to this, or you could write it that it's just for a miniature pony.
I think that might be appropriate.
Well, let's, so let's go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this.
Public.
The public still has something? Okay. Oh, oh, okay, yes, 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 yes. Okay, sorry about that. So, yes, do, does anyone in the public have comments that they would wish to make?
I have.
Okay, and if, if you do, would you come up to the microphone, please? Do we, who do we have on the list for public comment?
As far as I know, I put them out, and so.
Okay.
I apologize for the delay, I've never been to one of these before.
That's okay. I know I haven't chaired very many of these, so I'm, even though they have it laid out specifically for me, I'm still.
I'm here for both of these, actually.
Okay, so if you would come forward and state your name and the address of your residence.
Sure. I'm Carol Chandler Kenry. I live at 156 Linden Avenue. I've been here for two years. We bought the old Shackelford place that was in disrepair and redid it. We, we came here to live near my mother, who lives on Tabor Lane. I love Urbana. One of the highlights of my daily walk was when I discovered the hidden treasures in Urbana, some of which were the wonderful chickens that I saw and the roosters crowing in the background, and also unbeknownst to me, this wonderful little pony. And I saw a glimpse of him at one of my morning walks, and I was never able to see him again, but I saw him, and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, I love Urbana." So I really do hope that you would allow this animal to stay where, where it is. It's a delight, and it certainly made my day. And every time I walk around that area, I try to get a glimpse without being too invasive, but it was a highlight of my day, and I just wanted to let you know that, so.
Thank you. Other members of the public, it looks like Kristi Anzavino.
Hi.
Hi.
Kristi Anzavino, I live at 350 Howard Street. Teddy is well taken care of, not just by his family, but by this community. When they travel or they're gone, Marnie calls me, and I go and I take, I check in on him at least if once, if twice a day, make sure everything's okay. Yes, he does get lonely. All animals get lonely, but he is not suffering. I grew up with horses. I, I like to think that I know a little bit about them, and they are wonderful. Everyone loves a little pony. We had a Chinkatik pony, and it was just so special to have something like that. I don't think you're going to, I, I glimpsed something one time. The trolley car actually comes, and in the bend, they're going on to Kent, he stops, and he lets the kids and everybody on their way to Teddy. So I think that's kind of special for our town.
Thank you. Has anyone else signed up to make comments or wish to? So go ahead and sign in and.
She's on mute.
Oh, okay, all right. So state your name and your address.
I'm Dorothy Dreher, Dawn's wife. Live at 410 Ober Street, the other end from Marnie. I have to say that the indication that this pony is not well taken care of is the most absurd thing that anybody could possibly say. Marnie loves that horse, she loves her dog. She takes care of them to the nth degree, I mean, beyond the average citizen. Not only does, as Dawn kind of stated, not only does that pony bring so much joy to the kids, but our neighbors, the Shackelfords, she walks down there, feeds that pony. That pony is not malnourished. Everybody comes through. We even had somebody that saw it coming in on a boat and walked down there to see the pony. What a great way to entice people into our town. There, you don't need to worry about this pony. I, she just needs to be backed up. She is the most amazing person and does fabulous things for the town, and I don't know how anybody could challenge her.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing, and I do thank you for attending. And what we need to decide is what the commission wishes to do with this application and make a determination as to what the commission wishes to recommend to council on Thursday night. We can recommend additional conditions to be included in the permit. Do we wish approval, denial, or delayed decision pending more information from the applicant? Do we have a discussion, or is somebody ready to make a motion? Is there any discussion? Do I hear a motion? That would be a motion to approve, deny. That would be a motion to approve, deny, or delay.
I move that we approve it.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Okay, and is there any discussion about that before we take a vote?
Do you want to put some restrictions on?
Okay, all right. So, what conditions, if any, additional additions, if any, would you wish to place on the permit?
Well, one would be the fence, I think, would be a good idea. And then the fact that it is a miniature horse, I'm not sure exactly how you define that for this purpose, but I think that's important as well. So, I think those two provisions.
And that it would be perpetual until the property was sold.
I would, I like that, too.
Uh-huh, because the next owner may not take.
That's right.
I can incorporate all that.
But I would do miniature horse. I think there's some, I think horse people would say they're miniature ponies and miniature horses, and we would look at them and say they're little tiny horses.
I don't know that the fence needs to extend the entire length of that property line there. I think if it just goes down where the paddock is, I think that would take care of the problem.
Okay, so at minimum, to the length of the property line that follows the paddock?
Right.
Is what you're saying?
If that's what they would like to do.
Okay.
Is that closest to the end of the driveway of that neighbor? So, that would keep that from going down their property? I think that's one of the bigger issues.
Are there other stipulations that anyone wishes to make?
Did we say that it's for the property owner only?
Yes, perpetual until there's a sale of the property.
Okay.
So, it would not convey with sale?
Right.
Okay, anything else? Are we ready to take a vote now? So, do I have a motion to approve, deny, or delay decision?
I move that we approve.
Okay, is there a second? A second. Okay, so let's take a vote. Katie Wilson, approve. Okay, Gary Lister, approve. Don Dreher?
Yes.
Okay, Mary Hanson says yes. Carol Williams?
Yes, absolutely.
And Louis Hall? Yes, okay. All right, so that recommendation will be forwarded to the council at the council meeting on Thursday. Okay, let's see. Okay, I think that's it for that public hearing, correct? Yes, all right, so now we move on. Okay. All right, so now, this is a public hearing to consider special use permit application 2023 SUPA-05, and I am hereby opening this public meeting. And we are here to consider the special use permit application of Small Town Burger, made by Jay Wolfson. Small Town Burger wishes a permit to operate a food trailer at 241 Virginia Street, which has commonly been referred to as the Town Green, although the property is not owned by the town. The food trailer would act as the kitchen for takeout or outdoor tables for seating. Restroom facilities, fire pits, strings of overhead lighting, and music would also be provided for customers' use and enjoyment. We will first hear from staff about the application and relevant provisions of the zoning ordinance. So, staff presentation. Roy Keim, please.
Well, as the chairman have said, we're considering a special use permit for, and what we would call in the town, a restaurant. The difficulty in that is there are different requirements from the public health standpoint for a restaurant and a food truck or trailer. They're more liberal with the food truck and trailer. But to get to where we need to be under our zoning for the special use permit, we would consider it a restaurant which has a great, there are a great many types of restaurants in our definition, and I think the truck, food truck, would fit within it. In addition to what Mary said about the truck with the restrooms, there will be seating for approximately 30 patrons, picnic tables, outdoor seating, and individual chairs. There will also be four or five fire pits, overhead electrical lights, and it will be similar in design to the location that the Small Town Burger has in Kilmarnock. And there are pictures in back we'll look at in a moment that show what it would look like. Nine letters were sent out to the area property owners immediately around it. There have been no requests to see the applications. This hearing was advertised November 30th and the 7th. There are no setback requirements for this. It's in a B1 zone. There's a 35-foot height restriction, but that's not going to be a problem. As I said, we use Section 1746.341, which permits a new restaurant with a special use permit. If you had a restaurant operating in town that previously, in some iteration, had been given a special use permit, they don't have to renew it. They just have to agree to the terms of what that special use permit was. But because this is going to be in a vacant lot, basically, we have to go through the activity of obtaining a special use permit. Definition of a restaurant in the code is any building in which, for compensation, food or beverages are dispensed for consumption on the premises, including, among other establishments, cafes, tea rooms, confectionery shops, or refreshment stands. And I would argue that this is pretty close to a refreshment stand. The town has no prohibition or permission for use of a food truck or trailer. And there is also no definition in the town of a food truck or a trailer. The only definitions about food trucks and trailers have been utilized on a temporary basis at the oyster festivals, Secret Saturdays, farmer's markets, and other occasions for several years. If we want to amend the zoning ordinances to include or exclude food trucks, we would have to do that. The only reference to trailers can be found in Section 175.4, which says that temporary building construction trailers, mobile homes, used in conjunction with construction work may be prohibited, permitted in any district for a period when the construction is in progress, but temporary facilities will be removed immediately upon completion. This is not connected in any way with permanent or construction. And as I've said, the applicant is concerned that it's a huge-term restaurant, and the special use permit would subject him to difficulties with the Health Department, which are more stringent than a typical restaurant or food truck and trailer. This is a matter that he can work out with the Health Department. And with the Health Department, it certainly isn't bound by the definition of restaurant for the special use permits. There is a provision in the code 17.6.15 that requires a new restaurant to have one parking spot available for each of the three seats within the restaurant. We do have a parking problem in the immediate area, and this is right in the heart of our district, our restaurant district. And only on-street parking in the lot between the ABC store and something different is available. None of the other restaurants in the area have been required to provide private parking based on the number of seats available. I think that would be a hardship to impose on these folks and, well, not affecting the others. There may be some land that's available in back that could be used, but we would have to work that out with the owner of the property. These folks are just leasing the property from the owners. A HARB meeting was held on November 8th, 28th, and has authorized the awarding of a certificate of appreciation, appropriateness. Your package of things has pictures of what goes on, and they're all in black and white, because I couldn't do it on my printer. It would have ruined all my colors. I'm going to go through quickly and show you what we're looking at. But as we talked on the other permit, we could put some restrictions on it. We could limit the amount of light and noise disturbance to the extent possible to the boundaries of the property, and when the lights on the overhead wiring shouldn't be more than 40 watts. They should comply with all state and local federal regulations concerning the business, maintain the property in a neat and orderly manner, conduct the town's water and sewer, be connected to the town's water and sewer, and remain current on buildings. At the end of the permitted use by the applicant or its successors, all temporary structures, and all these things are basically temporary, including the food truck, shed, trailers, fire pits, landscape, and gravel shall be removed, and the permit holder shall return it to the original surface with appropriate grass seating. The permit holder, I say here, is relieved of the requirements for the parking spot because enforcement of such a provision would be inequitable. Those are just suggestions. If you have anything more, like the hours of operation, I think in the material, Mr. Wolfson has talked about when they would operate. But that's basically.
My take on this, and just so that you can kind of see what these things look like in color. This is in Kilmarnock. This is, what is that, Route 3?
Yep, Route 3, yes.
Going right through the middle of town. The, there's a parking lot here, and then the ABC store. So, people can pull in, go to the ABC store and get a hand. And the Small Town Burger is not contemplating any liquor or beer or.
No. There's a separate.
Kind of an aerial view of what it will look like. The grass would all go away, get that gravel here and here. These are the overhead lights that'd be assigned. The fence would stay just as it is. Hopefully, it'll look a little better than it does.
Absolutely.
These are the kind of tables and chairs. And some people discuss the fact that this really doesn't look like Urbana. You know, these aren't antique colors and things. But this place is not designed to do that. It's a different kind of atmosphere. And if the planning commission, if HARB, the planning commission, and the town think it ought to be, then it should be this way. Red, white, and blue is, you know, who can argue with that?
Amen.
And again, these are the lights that'd be there. If you've gone by it at night, you've seen it. This is a fire pit. As I said, there are three or four of them. These are speakers for the outside music. This is the sign at night that would be lit up. This is the truck now. That's kind of, I mean, that catches your eye without any question. There's been some idea that perhaps we could put some lattice work over the wheels so it would look less mobile. But that's up to you, folks. Again, it's there. And again, it's visually very racing, I don't know what it is, but it's.
Eye catcher.
Yeah, it's an eye catcher. That's the easiest way to say it. And this is what the window would look like, the service window. How many employees at a time do you think would be working?
Typically, during busy season, about four. Four to five, maybe. You can't fit that many in a truck.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, you have four people inside there?
No kidding.
One doing the microphone, and three cooks, and one running the gathering now.
So, this is, as I said, it looks much better in color than it does in your activities. And you.
Automated dog bowl and automated ham watching station out. Make a park, you know, that'd be nice. The speakers face away from the road towards the, we have it set certain dust bowls and so forth, so.
This is the restroom. It's a portable restroom. It's kind of like a porta potty, but it's more sophisticated. It's plumbed in and looks better.
There might be an inside picture of it, too.
That's what it is, and there's an inside, that's what it looks like inside. So, it's a little bit more sophisticated than what we use here in town.
Like the sign.
One of the nice things about this is it would provide a set of restrooms in town where we really don't have any, and that's a failing of the town, which should remedy. This is the food. There's a lobster roll. And you will note, if you're a New Englander, that they're square sides, and that's the way you have a real lobster roll. But that's what the.
You're making me hungry.
No, really.
Okay. That's mine. Jay?
All right, well, thank y'all for taking the time to, yeah, these are my partners, my boys. This is Duke and Rock, and we created a family business. This is the whole goal of being part of this. So, you'll see, if you approve us and we're able to come, you'll see one of these three faces here. I'm like these guys. So, I've been, you know, I thank you, Roy, for putting that all together. There's a beautiful thing earlier today with the pony and the community. I love your community. Part of Small Town Burger is about being part of the community. The reason to be in town is, and not have liquor and beer and all that, is for people to walk town. They eat, they get their vibe on, and then they go and walk the town. They're part of the town. I'm really big about being part of town. There's some, you know, letters in there from, you know, Kilmarnock and the town manager, and, you know, David Doon, the person who owns the property, and how I present myself in town. We have a big old Christmas tree, and everyone loves it right now. It's like 26 feet. We just, we wanted to have fun. My goal is about energy and having fun and providing great food in a high-quality environment. So, it's not just about the food trailer that's, you know, super nice and clean and fresh. It's the grounds. It's, you know, polywood furniture. So, it's quality when somebody's sitting down, they lean back on it. It's the Tucci umbrella, the high-end umbrellas. It's all American-made. You know, if I could buy it in America, USA, I'm doing it. Doing all the local contractors and so forth. White picket fence, red, white, it's Americana to where it's supposed to be. I think, you know, I love being, the energy of that, that's part of being American, and serving burgers and lobster rolls and having fun. The bathrooms, I love to provide that opportunity for people to have bathrooms in the town. I think it was needed certainly in Kilmarnock. See it here, you don't have to eat with me to utilize them. In fact, I want people to use them, because they'll walk through my place of business and kind of check out the vibe and maybe look at the menu and so forth. I'm not a simple trailer. You know, we talked about the restaurant and how I can, you know, I don't want to be categorized as a restaurant, because I'm not one, actually. And, you know, restaurants are full structures, buildings and coating and ADA and all these other things that go along with that. I'm basically a mobile trailer, and when I'm asking for it, I'm going to do this beautiful landscape. There's some actual greenery that I, with HARB, I just, you know, we worked at it, said I would put some nice green, some greenery touches in our thing. The reason why it's all gravel, and we have a layer, and we've really done it right is because we don't want bugs. We don't want people swatting around, ants crawling up, and we don't have any of that. And the way we did it is to allow for that, so it's very consistent, very clean, very fresh. We've almost been here a year, and it almost looks like, you know, a weekend opening. It still holds it very well. But we do have some green that we're putting in. The shed that we have, it will be in certain color schemes that approved by Harb. And other than that, though, red, white, and blue, energy, vibe, if we're able to approve a nice backlit sun, that'd be awesome. I'm in it to be in, you know, six days a week, 365 days a year, basically. I'm closed on Tuesdays, but everywhere else, I'm open 11 to 8:00 PM in the slow season, and then 11 to 9:00 PM during, you know, probably like mid-March through. I'm hoping to open up by March, sometime mid-March if I'm approved, then I can get all, everything going. I'm, I've got all the contractors, all the people. I've got a big set of infrastructure behind me to help me get there. But I do need approval before I, you know, really move forward with it. All I can say is, you know, I really, I'm a guy that cares about communities. I love my community. I love this area. My kids went to Christ Church. They've raised, you know, they've raised in the restaurant business. I was a northern neck burger before that, so I've been in this business for a real long time. And I just, you know, I provide that energy and support to the community. I love it. So that's my presentation to you guys. You know, when you see what I do, it's not, there's nothing low-end about me. It's just the fun that I found that I really love. It's the simplicity of it, and Americana and vibrant, you know? So I hope that was what you'd want in your town.
All right. So thank you for your presentation. And now questions and comments by commission members. Is it going to span the whole length of the green? And how far back?
It will go, probably not quite as far back. It's about 40 feet deep, maybe. And I know Roy was talking about some possible parking and such back there. Talked with David, you know, if there's something that gets approved and so forth, you know, he's working on something for that in Kilmonik as well. So I think there's potential for other things behind us. But we're just using the whole frontage. About, like I said, about 40, 50 feet. I have the private to do anything throughout the whole thing. But I think that that's probably where we'll keep it tight. Tree will be well groomed, and we'll have mulch around it, and, you know, maybe string lights off of it in a little different direction, really. I'm all about vibe and feel, you know? But yeah, there you go.
What kind of music?
Kind of like more contemporary, not too old like me. Not that I'm old, but I'm old. More of a young, but always positive, happy music, we'll say, I guess. Contemporary happy music? Is that the mix?
I would say similar, like, yeah, young, just no cursing or anything.
No, no, no.
Young, uplifting, uplifting songs.
And how light does music go?
It goes the whole time, from open to close. But one of the things is, we do have it, you know, set for certain decibels. So 30 or less really is, it's a background sound. It's not that we want to, you know, because people want to sit and talk. But you ever sit in a restaurant that has no music?
That's weird.
It's uncomfortable. So it's that. Right now, we have Christmas music playing, you know, during the Fourth of July. We'll have, we do, you know, a little bit more patriotic stuff during the, you know, Fourth of July, Memorial Weekend and so forth, because that's what people are into. They want that, you know? I want to give it to them.
Other questions or comments, Louis?
Is the building on the right, on the north side in Kilmonik, is that the shed?
That's the shed.
Okay.
And we'll have a fully built-out custom shed that's actually doing, we would do it with, the topic, it's a fleets, fleet something on, it's a shed done by the Amish. It's an Amish shed. So it's going to be high, well-quality, good-looking, you know, not quite as big as that one. That one happened to be there when we moved into that spot. It was pretty existing.
The material that you have, there's a little map of layout. You can see, it's not exactly the same as layout for Kilmonik.
So is the storage shed behind the ABC store, then?
It would be potentially to the, so we've got to figure out exactly how we're going to position everything. I don't have, you know, until I walk it out, really can put numbers down with it, and how it's going to be delivered and all those things is very important. But it'll be behind, so the food trailer, it'll either be behind it this way, maybe this way, maybe running longways, pushed back towards the ABC store. But it's not meant to be like a focal point of any sort. It's going to be more of a bland trap.
Because we were kind of hoping that maybe there could be some diagonal parking behind the ABC store, and then people could pull through and go out...
The post office side?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've heard that.
No, 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 not the post office side, the, on the side of the ABC store, into that parking lot, possibly.
Yeah, one-way.
Yeah, and that it would...
We wouldn't go behind, maybe, but slightly behind the ABC store. You know, it's about 28 foot. So it's got to be set back a little bit because I'm looking to put in a golf cart parking space, like right next to ABC store where there's already that ramp. And then I can, you know, fence it in and do, you know, lights and...
Between the tree and the building you're talking about?
Yeah, between like the building, put some posts up and like light it up, make it a really nice place for golf carts, because I know that's, you know, we talk about parking.
So there's no actual driveway that would go back?
No, there's no driveway. No, next to liquor store, no, no driveway. No.
So would you, would you access from behind the ABC store? Like, how would you move stuff in and out?
We'd probably go through the front there, but it's, but it might come right up into the shed, like behind the tree, so like you have the tree, maybe 10 feet behind. At the moment, that's what I'm thinking. I'm not 100% on that because when I get deliveries of sorts of, you know, whatever, dry goods, they can wheel it kind of right into there. I could have a ramp. It doesn't beat up the gravel and all the other stuff that go along with it. But I may have it turned. I may have it cocked out a little bit. Somebody was saying that there's opportunity for a mural to possibly go on the side of the ABC store. And I would like to, you know, if we are approved, you know, at least run some electric down there in hopes so maybe it could be uplit once it's there. So I'm open to helping the town or myself, because I think it's beneficial to have a cool thing where people would walk over and see that. You know, so, you know, I would certainly look to incorporate that in that respect.
Two questions. First, can you hear the music on the other side of the street?
Not very well, barely, barely.
The, not that I have any personal interest, right?
Sure. Unless you want to listen to some, even when I put it really loud, it's very hard.
I own the test weekend.
Okay, well done.
So I don't, you know...
You want to compete with music? Do you have music playing on your porch when you walk in?
No, right now, I don't.
If you'd like to.
Someday, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
The, and there should be room for everyone.
I totally agree.
My second question is, what are the restrictions that Harb put on?
Yes.
Some color, so, they wanted some greenery. So we put greenery spots of greenery that they approved. They wanted coloring on the shed to be in line with Williamsburg. So the shed's not very, and I didn't want it to be very poppy anyway, so it worked out fine with that.
What did they say about the sign?
The sign needs to be within code, so whatever your code is, so it could be up front, and it probably is not potentially going to be backlit unless you all say, hey, we'd really love to see that sign because it's fun, it's Americana. But if not, what I'll do is, you know, present, you know, whoever you guys, maybe even you all use sign, you use for signage, that will know to be able to go through the code and know the code in this town and do it right. But I would, you know, it could be, maybe I have it lit, you know, I'll work within the parameters of it and get it approved. Obviously, I'm not just, you know, dub a sign unless that's what you guys do here, but...
By backlit, do you mean like fluorescents or do you mean...
Well, the one that I have, like, that's a beautiful, yeah, that's probably the nicest sign in Kilmonik.
Yeah.
It's an $11,000 sign. If you would let me put one up here, I would totally do the same. I would do a beautiful, high-end sign like that. But you'd all have to know that, you know, like, I see what the liquor store does, and, you know, that's not all great-looking. But what I would do is something great-looking, if you think that's great-looking. The open signs turn black when they're closed, when we're closed. When we're open, they glow red, so it's another feature. It's got a plug at the bottom to help do, you know, whatever. But if you would approve that lollipop sign, love that. But if not, it'll be a hanging dangling sign, kind of not super vibrant, but that's why my, everything else needs to look vibrant, because not having a vibrant sign, like I tell you, is not doing anyone anything great. But it'll be lit, it'll be however I can light it, however it's supposed to be done. I will, it'll look fun, and it'll be as sophisticated as it can be.
So as a process question, like, we can approve that, and then the signage would have to be approved separately?
That's a different, different question.
Yeah. Because that's not our purview again.
Right. But talk about signage.
And other, other questions from, from planning commission members? Okay. And so now it's time for questions and comments from the public. And you need to sign up and come to the lectern. Come on up again. Come on up again. And again, your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Carol Kenry, 156 Linden Avenue, Urbana. I'm here, I was so excited when I saw two topics of interest to me and importance to me at the same meeting, like, oh, I got to go to this meeting. We've act, I work at Isabel Horsley Real Estate in Urbana, and I have the opportunity to work with Diana Wolfson. And also, I have been subjected to the general public coming to our Realtor office asking for a public bathroom. And it happens all the time. But one thing I love about Urbana is its walkability, and it's very community, people-oriented. And I think this restaurant would afford more of that. Walkability, people, it's like, it's a great place. It's right in the middle of town, and people could walk there from the marina, both marinas, and walk there and get there through the, from the campground and bring tourist traffic through Urbana. And I think it'd be a fine addition to this town. While I know that we have other restaurants and they're absolutely wonderful, I think this niche would be well-served very much. And I'm very much in favor of this restaurant. I think it's a great idea. And I even thought that the green people, the people, the Main Street people, it just kind of goes along with that area of like that alley place, making that more usable. Boy, what a great use of this property. And people, making it a community place. And people can come straight across the street, right on over for dinner, since there's no restaurant there right now. So what a great, what a great addition to the, to the community. So thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the public? Any other comments or questions from the public? Okay. So now we're going to close the public hearing, and thank you for attending. And we need to decide what the commission wishes to do with this application and make a determination as to what the commission wishes to recommend to council. We can recommend additional conditions be included in the permit. Do we wish to recommend any additional conditions? I do, I do have a question, actually. And that is, a special use permit does not convey to the property itself, it conveys to the business, is that correct? And for the use of the property?
It goes to the property.
To the property. So does that, does that, if, if the business goes, would another business be able to come in without having to request a subsequent special use permit?
Yes.
Unless we put a condition on it that say that it, okay. Okay. Okay, I think that's important.
That's difficult because the property is not owned, is not owned by the people who are asking for permission. Basically, we are going to grant the property the right to have a restaurant on it, and we can restrict that to, you know, if this operation stops, the special use permit goes away.
Okay.
And I would recommend that we do that.
Yeah, I think so, too. I think so, too. I have another question, and it is, as Roy and I have discussed, there is nothing in the, in the town code pertaining to food trucks specifically, which is why, and I think there was something under restaurants that pertained to snack stands or something like that, hence the construal of that. How is, how is that going to, what, how is the health department going to weigh in on whether or not it is a restaurant or a food truck and subject to that? Do...
Well, that, that's really not our concern.
That's not our concern, yes.
However, in Kilmonik, when they had a similar situation...
Yes.
They said that these trailer things would be governed by their regulations on food trucks or trailers.
Okay, but we don't have a regulation on food trucks or trailers.
And theirs was only like, a food trailer can only stay at a place for 48 hours, no longer than 48 hours. So I needed a conditional use permit to say my trailer could be...
Wasn't moving.
However long I want it to be there. And how I am regulated by the health department is, I'm just a mobile food trailer. I just have the ability to just, I just stay at a spot. But I've created, basically, I've just enhanced the land, and I put some bathrooms in, because you guys said I had to put bathrooms in, you know, I could put a shed there, you know, I could put it there. So I've just basically created this beautiful property, and once a year, I need to move my trailer to get it permitted, and I move it right back, just like I do in Kilmonik.
Okay.
Perfect.
But the health department's treatment of you is not dependent upon what our town code says? It's totally independent?
Yes, we question that.
Yes.
Then who governs? Does the health department check out the bathrooms, for example?
The bathrooms are totally, I provide bathroom, that's why, like, if you open a restaurant, you have to have ADA, you have to have certain things.
Right, right.
My bath, I'm just providing a nice, I know because of business, if there's no bathrooms for a woman, my business is not going to do well. The women drive dinner. So if I want to, and then I got to have a nice bathroom, because if the women go in there, they're like, oh, I liked it, yeah, I could go eat here, because the man's going to be, I want a burger. So the reason why I have a bathroom, and a nice one, is because I know that women want that, and I want to give that to them. But I don't want to just do a porta potty like, you know, crappy...
But you're not, you're not required by the health department or because you're a food truck?
The only thing I'm required is the, is the trailer. That, that has to pertain into the, it's got three components, saying, whatever the regulations are for a truck. The rest of the ground is as if, I, I just won't, like, you rented me to come up and go on that ground right now as it is, I could put my trailer there and sell food there. It wouldn't, it's not my vision, obviously.
Okay.
But you see what I'm saying? There's no regulation other than, you know, now, I do have to plummet, and I put electric, so I, because I don't like the big generator sound of a trailer, so I want to have, I got to have a certain amount of electricity and so forth. So I'm going to spend, you know, the infrastructure, whatever, 20 grand to plummet, the right way, the bathrooms plumbed, electric, water, gas, with all that stuff.
So we're, we're basically, we're, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to say anything negative about this, but we're relying on your word and your, your upkeep of the facilities and the cleanliness of the facilities. And we're relying on you, and to me, that creates a condition that I would somehow want to place on this, because if you sold it to somebody else and it was still the same business technically, you know, then, then what? Because if we're relying on you as an individual for that, what, what do we do if something happens and we need to protect the public?
Well, and does that set a precedent for other businesses?
I don't know.
In town, special use permits?
And I put in there something about keeping it clean and tidy or whatever.
Okay.
And I would, I'd recommend that the special use permit goes away when, if they cease doing business there.
Okay, if they cease doing business, which would include if they sell the business, but someone wanted to continue to operate there?
I'm not saying I'm looking to sell, by that means.
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm just trying to think ahead.
Listen to what you have to say about it.
Well, you know, I don't know if we really want to get into change of ownership of, you know, are you a corporation or your kids getting it?
But that, as long as the conditions are specified as special conditions that would need to be maintained.
And we can...
You have the grounds, like you have in there, the grounds to be kept.
Yeah, you do.
Are you...
There's a list of conditions.
We would not object, I think, of you transferring it to your children or anybody... We would not object, I think, of you transferring it to your children or anybody in your family.
Sure.
But to sell it, I think we would cut it off.
Uh-huh, I think so too.
Okay.
Trying to sell it to another entity.
They'd have to reapply.
They'd have to reapply for a special use permit, yeah. Can I ask again, just to, to understand, the, that's what Kilmonik's, you know, whatever that county, I forget, I always.
Yeah, Lancaster.
Lancaster County has interpreted, right, and Middlesex County has to interpret the rules, or is it your understanding it's?
It's my understanding is, I'm just doing a food, I'm, I'm doing mobile food unit, and that's it, and I've, and I've rented a space, and I'm gonna bring my trailer to, and that's it.
Okay.
And I just choose to do a certain, you know, upscale, you know, over-the-top vibe.
Right.
Because I wanna be busy, I wanna make money.
Would you?
I think you did talk to the health guy you use in Lancaster, and he.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's just what it is, it's just that, the, the rest of it doesn't apply to the health department, because there's nothing there that's.
Permanent.
Permanent, permanent for them, so there's no structures, there, you know, coding and all the stuff that you, you require for the restaurant, so I'm basically just putting out a, a beautifully landscaped, or the property owner, David could do that for me, and then he'd say, Jay, I wanna rent you, you're, you're being called, come here.
Could I, could I read the, um, I, I, I don't think you read, did you read the special restrictions? Suggest, uh, of, of things that, that you suggest that we require?
I don't know that.
That the permit holder shall, one, limit the amount of noise and light disturbance to the extent possible to the boundary limits of the property, individual white lights on overhead wiring shall be limited to forty watts, number two, comply with all local, county, state, and federal laws, rules, and regulations concerning the conduct of its business, three, maintain the property in a clean and orderly manner, four, connect to the town's water and sewer systems and remain current on billings, five, at end of permitted use by current applicant or its successor, all the temporary structures, including the food truck, trailer, storage sheds, tables, chair, fire pits, landscaping and gravel shall be removed by the permit holder and returned to original surface after seeding with appropriate grass, six, permit holder is relieved of the parking spot requirement of section seventeen point six point fifteen because of the inequity that enforcement of such provision would create. I think the only thing that I would recommend is on number five, at the end of permitted use by current applicant or its successor, I think I would, I would recommend that we put a condition that the special use permit ends upon.
If I transfer it to my children, or just?
Well, ends if, if it is sold outside of your family, I guess.
Okay.
If it is sold to an entity outside of your family, and that, that entity would have to reapply, I don't know how you'd word that, but. Do you, okay, I don't know how other people feel about that.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Okay.
Is, is the, do you visualize, and I apologize, I'm driven by Kilmonik, but I've never been there, but is Kilmonik wheelchair accessible? It should be, right, I mean, it's.
It is gravel.
It's gravel, so, some people have wheelchairs, I can go on it, but it's not, people.
Well, it's not.
It's not smooth, it's a gra, it's gravel, so.
Yeah.
You know, they choose, I haven't had any complaints about it, but, you know, people handicap the, the walk, there's, there's edging, because it's edged with the gravel, different colors, um, so, you know, people go out there and risk, and they see, I mean, I'm not fully insured, I mean, I've insured the whole property, but, um, there, there isn't, um, for that, and that, it's basically, I put a food trailer on top of landscape property, so if you have that, you're at your own risk to, to walk on gravel, and gravel's not certain study for people in, in general, I mean, so some people walk, I haven't had any issues, but, um, I'm fully covered for them if I do, but it's not, it's not something that's required, it's not a restaurant, and it's not park, it's just an improved land.
Okay, in addition to that, I would put the hours of operation.
Yes.
You know, closed, it operates six days a week, I won't say Tuesdays, because if you were changing around.
Right.
And, uh, from whatever it was, eleven to eight or nine, and then, um, you know, you, you'll, you'd be open fifty-two weeks a year, but could close down on days that.
Poor weather, listen, I, I look at like this, about twenty days a year, I've got it in my plan that I'm just gonna be closed for whatever, it's gonna be snow, it's gonna be horrible rain, you know, torrential, you know, if it's at all marginal to be open, I'm open, it, you know, I have online ordering, so I have that for people to be able to order online and pick up, um, I, I, it's set up, I've got, I'll have guest wifi, so when people were there, they have good wifi, so that they can order online if they choose to, even though I have somebody at the window to take their order, I try to make it as easy for them as possible, um, to, to place an order or, or, or get something, um, everything's to go, I don't know.
We, we need to be careful not to have, and I'm sorry, Martha, I just saw that, we need to have comments, not from the floor, because if it's recorded, it has to be here. Okay, so, the question is, um, are we, is there anything else that the planning commission wishes to ask or discuss before we consider whether or not, uh, someone wishes to make a motion to approve, deny, or delay the decision pending more, more information from the applicant?
I move that we approve the, uh, special use permit and, uh, recommend it to council
Can I, can I raise an issue?
What?
I think we ought to think about.
Okay.
And I think it's a wonderful idea, and I'm excited about you coming, I, I do think that we, as a town, need to think about our aging population and the ability of people to access everything in our town, and I understand, believe me, that costs of, you know, multiplies of doing it right and everything, I'm not, but I think that, um, you know, having pushed my dad around in a wheelchair, and having had to tell people last weekend with the home tour, I'm sorry, you can't go on the home tour, because none of our homes are accessible, um, and having invested in one room that is wheelchair accessible, I think that's something as a town that we need to think about, and as a planning commission, we need to think about, and I'm not sure if we have.
To have some appropriate surfaces for individuals with disabilities to transit.
And I'm not necessarily anti-gravel, I'm, I'm not, I'm just.
I don't want, if I wanna speak, um, if I should speak.
Well, can I add just?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
The, um, again, I'll, I think it's a wonderful thing, and I'm not necessarily anti-gravel, because you gotta find a, a steady medium, but to, um, I think that is something we ought to take very seriously.
As a town, so that's something that we can, we can consider as a town, absolutely.
And I guess to the extent.
And I don't think it's something that we can require, because it's not required by law.
But there, there is a provision in those, what I wrote up, that you can comply with all state and federal laws, and that would be included.
Okay, but this, this idea, it's a bigger, it's a bigger question for accessibility of persons with disabilities, uh, throughout our town, and that's something we can add to our agenda for the planning commission, Katie?
I'm just curious, is it possible, I know this would add a lot of cost, but if they did, you know, where the sidewalk is and the fence, having some sort of like paved on either side of the fence, that if they chose to move on, they didn't stay, it could still be something that would be usable for the town, and you could put like picnic tables there, and I've personally, with my family, been there after a school performance, I've only been to your place once, I was over-the-top impressed, because I came from a, a restaurant background, worked many years, and just the friendliness, the customer service, the impeccable layout, the, the beauty of it, and for being a food truck, I didn't expect much, but it, it blew me away in, in how clean and well-kept the property was, how really good the food was, it's a little pricey, but that's okay, I mean, we have, and not to say it's not worth the price, I think it was, I, I think for the community, we have it, it was appropriate.
I don't think that's part of the, what has, I think they've been, what they've applied for is something that is very temporary, that could be returned to its previous state for, because they're a tenant.
But I just wonder, like, I know they have the wine area during Oyster Festival usually there, but if they, the town was, would, to, what you're saying with the aging population, and that there's younger families too, and there's younger families with kids with special needs and strollers.
Right.
To have some sort of, something along the edging of the, you know, like a platform where you could wheel into and have some seating, like picnic tables there, and then do what they normally do with the gravel, again, this is just an idea.
Sure.
That if, if something changed about the, the setup, it could still be usable for other purposes.
Well, or even, even just as simple as, you know, a curb that you can roll up on, or, you know, slightly bigger bathroom, that, to the extent that that could be incorporated, not, I don't know if it can or not.
I'll stay and talk.
Okay, if.
People, listen, I.
Yes.
I do, I'm a bit long-winded at times, so it's not like, bad.
And we need to move on.
Certainly, um, if that is part of what my condition's going to be, is that I need to be basically accessible to ADA type standards, I will not be coming to town, I'll make that real clear, it's too expensive, I don't, the bathrooms are expensive as is, for me to create the ones I do have, that's not just a porta potty, I thought a lot of things through, and I've got a budget like everyone else does, at some point that budget goes away, and it's just not worthy of doing, I wanna be part of this town, I've told you what I'll do for the town, um, but if you push that on to me, know that I will not be here.
Above what the law requires.
Just whatever the require, requires for me, and.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, so, back to the question, and, um, is, are we ready to return to whether or not anyone wants to make a motion to approve, deny, or delay?
I think I, I think I made a motion. I made a motion that we recommend that, uh, town council, uh, grant a special use permit to Small Town Burger.
Okay, okay, and is there any further discussion from council, or from the commission? Okay, and so let's vote, let's start with, uh, Louis Hall?
Yes.
Uh, and Carol Williams?
Yes.
Mary Hansen says yes, Don Drayer?
Yes.
Gary Lister?
Yes.
And Katie Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and that is with the adoption of the additional, additional things that, that we outlined, and so, um, all right, and then do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Okay, Don Drayer and Carol Williams, second motion to adjourn, and I think that's it, okay, and, uh, let's take a quick call, a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and yes, all right, thank you, thank.